...Asian question gets overshadowed because we kind of dominate those news headlines in a negative way.
Well, you know, I think if you think what's happened in this state since 1994 and Proposition 187, we've sort of gone through a 12-step program. You know, denial at first, anger, until, hey, wait a second, maybe this isn't so bad. I mean, your work, you know, as a cultural worker is extremely important in this. I think California has actually adopted extremely well. And it's in many ways, it could be an example for the rest of the country. In some cases, not, in some ways, not. But definitely in the sense that the majority of the people now in this state sort of get it. Immigrants have been around, they're not the other. They're not here to eat your babies, okay? They're actually here to work and strengthen this economy.
But they did not come through Ellis Island, though.
Well, that's true.
They do not have that sepia tone luster about it.
Well, African-Americans didn't either. We came on a different boat. But, and one point is, is that there are concerns. And one of the things that you have to frame is, is the human rights issues. The idea that people would come here as guest workers and put down roots and develop families would have to go back, that's against family values. That's against all the things that we really value here as Americans, and we really have to talk about. And for African-Americans, the civil rights issue of having people knocked on their doors and dragged out of their beds and taken from their kids, those are things that are really against the kind of values that people have fought for in this country.
That's right. And I think that what's fascinating about California is that you see, you know, the polls, people are a lot more accepting about immigrants and much more in favor of a documented legalization in a place because we live closely. And we know that this is not good for our community to have these types of divisions, these lack of rights, right, in our context. But we need still to build the coalitions to teach the rest of the country. If we were up to California, we'd be fine, you know? But obviously, a lot of places where immigrants are just showing up in the middle of the country is where the biggest opposition to immigration reform is happening, you know? Rather than taking, you know, a lesson from us that, look, immigrant legalization is good, and we need it again now, and we need it better than the last time.
We only have just a minute and a half or so left. And you spoke, Sean Seay, of, it's an interesting term, revitalized immigrant business districts. You talked about that.
Right.
Where's the next business, immigrant business? Is it MacArthur Park? Is it Baldwin Hills? That was a slight joke. But you see shifts even there with middle-class families. Used to be the black judges and lawyers, with this down, that area is changing also.
Well, not necessarily immigrant districts, immigrant districts per se, but cultural districts, for example, because we are being able to showcase a culture that's rich in history and tradition and customs that I think people want to experience here in Los Angeles. And this is a world-class city. It's a global city. And you've got a very multicultural, multi-ethnic community that spans all of Los Angeles. And so, so it's important that we cherish that and we highlight that. And so, when Titan was founded, after we championed and crusaded for the municipal designation of Titan, which has now received the distinction of becoming a preserve America community by the White House, we then spawned all these other districts, Little Armenia and Little Ethiopia. And so, these are districts where you have a lot of small businesses and commercial developments that could serve as engine for economic growth and revitalize an area.
Look out, MacArthur Park revitalization is coming. I never thought I'd say bless Ronald Reagan, but I'm gonna go ahead and say it. We're all out of time. There are so many more facets to discuss regarding immigration, immigrants here in Los Angeles. And we'll revisit this topic many, many more times on future programs. I'd like to thank all of our guests, so wonderful and intelligent here on the program. Thank you, viewers, for taking the time to join us. Remember, the Human Relations Commission's mission is to help solve the city's challenges at a grassroots level. For more information or to get involved with your own city, contact the Human Relations Commission by calling 213-978-1660, or go to the website www.lacity.org/hra. If you can't remember all that, just hit la-city.org. We live in a fascinating time and a fascinating city. Just don't stay at home, get out there, get involved with your city. Remember, we're a community. Remember, we are LA.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for January 7th, 2009. We are here in the John Farrow Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We welcome members of the public that are here today in council chambers, in our Van Nuys chambers remotely, and those of you watching us on Channel 35. We are broadcast live throughout the city's cable system on Channel 35 each meeting and rebroadcast in the evening as well. We're also available online at the city's homepage, which is la-city.org. You can catch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. We also archive all of our past council meetings. There's podcasts available, and you can always use your phone as well by calling council phone at 213-621-CITY to listen to any of the council proceedings or any of our committee hearings as well. I want to thank the members of the council that are here on time. Council members Cardenis, Gruel, Weezer, Parks, Perry, Smith, and Zine. We have four council members who are either excused or arriving later. Council members Labange, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Weiss. So if we can please have Mr. Wesson come down as soon as possible, please have Mr. Alarcon and Ms. Hahn join us. We will begin the meeting as soon as we can. Council President Eric Garcetti, and we want to again welcome folks that are here. Let them know that agendas are available for the meeting in the back. Those agendas are made available 72 hours in advance, either online, in person here at the clerk's office, or in our council chambers, 24 hours in advance for special meeting items. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that are on the agenda today and have been noticed for a public hearing, please fill out a speaker card in the back and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms on either aisle. We'll make sure to get those comments in today. We also have a section of our meeting called General Public Comment, which is for items that are under our jurisdiction but not officially on our agenda. And that gives the public a chance to speak to the council for two minutes per person on a topic of their choosing. I want to thank council members that are here. We now have Ms. Hahn as well, so we're just awaiting one more council member. So council members Alarcon and Wesson, if you'll please join us as soon as possible. We will begin meeting shortly. We now have a quorum, so Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenis, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Zine seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right. Mr. Parks moves, and Ms. Gruel seconds without objection. Those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there was a request to continue item number 14 to January 23rd.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing 14 till the 23rd? Seeing none, we will continue item number 14. Any other continuations?
No, Mr. President. And then on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items one and two, they're both street vacations, and the recommendation for council action is to instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay. Is there any objection? If not, anybody wishing to call this special? And do we have any cards on one or two?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. We'll open and close the public hearing. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items three through 15. Item number three is, Commissioner, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk.
And that would leave before council three through 15, with the exception of 14, it's already been acted on.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call special four through 15? Any specials, colleagues? Four through 15, any specials? Council members going once, four through 15? Nine for Mr. Alarcon. Thank you. We got a winner. Any others? We only have nine special, three is held on the table, and 14 is continued. If nobody else wishes to call other items special, we will go ahead on the balance and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
And next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 16 through 29. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. We should have 12 members, and we do have a card on 16. Let's hold 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 on the table, please. And for the other items, we do not have public speaker cards. We'll open and close the public hearings. Anybody wishing to call 21 through 29 special? 21 through 29. Seeing none, let's go ahead on the balance, and please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. And next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are the closed session items, 30 through 34. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold 30 through 34 on the desk for our closed session. And that will take us back to, we take up the commissioner before public comment, and then we will come back to general public comment. So I'd like to recognize the chair of our TCT Committee, Ms. Hahn, and ask our nominee to step forward to the table. If you'd be kind enough, Ms. Essel, to join us here at the table. And would I like to recognize Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I am very pleased to stand here and give a very hearty approval of the mayor's appointment to the Airport Commission, Chris Essel. We've all known Chris in her former life at Paramount, and know that she brings an incredible, diverse background and experience to the Airport Commission. This is the first new commission appointment we've had since 2005, so it's kind of exciting for us to vet a new commissioner. And Chris and I have talked, and we had her in committee earlier this morning, and I talked about what I think are the priorities right now, and that I really want this citizen commission to keep the airport on track, particularly for the modernization and the new concessions opportunities at the airport. I know unfortunately that we have an economic downturn that is affecting so many areas of the city, but I think the two big economic engines, the Port of Los Angeles and the airport, ought to be our own personal stimulus package here in Los Angeles. And we need to keep on track, the modernization, the building of the midfield concourse, the new gates, giving more opportunities for concessions and advertising, because I think when the economy goes back up, as I believe it will, we need to be on track, having built the infrastructure to have a world-class international airport where we can continue to attract and retain the airline industry and the millions of passengers whom we can expect, many of them to stay here in Los Angeles, to ride in our taxis, to stay in our hotels, to eat in our restaurants, and spend the money in Los Angeles that so greatly impacts our general fund. This is what the airport can do for us. And I really think you're coming in at a critical time in Los Angeles. This modernization plan, it's make or break right now. I believe you have the political will. I believe you have all the stars aligned to move this airport forward in a way that, frankly, it never has before, but it should be. We should take our spot on the world stage of great international airports, and I really think you're gonna make a great commissioner.
Thank you.
I would like, not so much just a specific question about how you believe about issues, but I think council and those who are watching would be interested in hearing a little bit of your background, a little bit of your expertise in land use and development that I think would play very well on this airport commission. And then maybe speak to some of the issues that you think are critical for all of us in Los Angeles to pay attention to as it relates to LAX and the other airports that we own.
Thank you, council member, Hahn. Appreciate that. I can't think of a more exciting time to join a commission, or a more exciting commission to, you know, be part of. My background lends itself well to this assignment, given that I actually have spent over 20 years working in real estate development and project management. And clearly, the next many years will be about getting a lot of capital projects through the pipeline. I also have, you know, 30 years of experience at a Fortune 500 firm, and managing objectives and strategic planning is all something that I live and breathe. So I will bring that expertise to the board and work with the other members of the commission and the staff. and the staff. I also am excited because I think this is a great commission. I've met almost all of them now, and I know some of them as well, and it's a very collaborative group. And I think the staff, the new executive director, I had the good fortune to also be part of the interview process, and her selection is extraordinary. We're very fortunate to have her, and she's picked a great executive team. So I think it's the best of all worlds in terms of my own sort of personal objectives to be part of that and contribute what I can, so.
Great. Thank you very much. We have three other councilmembers that would like to, so far, ask you questions. We'll start with Ms. Perry, and then Mr. Smith, and then Ms. Grul.
I just want to rise to say I'm really happy about this appointment. I've known Chris for many years, and her vast experience in government and political affairs, and understanding how to reach out and communicate and educate communities about significant projects is already well-established, and I think all of those skills and experience are very well transferred to development of the airport, and so I look forward to voting affirmatively for her today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Smith.
Well, thank you. I want to concur with everything Ms. Hahn has said about this appointee. I think it's one of the mayor's better appointments I've seen in years. For one, because I've had the opportunity to work with you for many years at Paramount, but also that you stood forward and jumped into the city general issues when you became chairman of the Downtown Business Association.
CCA.
CCA, gosh, I'm not thinking right today. CCA, which is a tremendously vibrant organization downtown, so obviously you have that civic engagement that we want on this board. And it's two things I want to see and ask you about. First of all, the Van Nuys Airport, which is very different than the rest of the entire system, because it is generally aviation-oriented rather than commercial, and as such, it is the largest general aviation airport in the United States of America, has uniquely different problems. One, sound issues in the community, and also management issues. You're coming into department, and I think your general manager is just an outstanding general manager, and I think you're going to make a great match with her. But my problem has been, over the years, is the bureaucratic staff that exists, particularly at Van Nuys Airport. So I'd like to ask you, and I think Mr. Cardenas, who's not here at the moment, but Ms. Cardenas, I would love to take you out there to meet with some of the CBOs that are out there so you can talk to them about the problems they've had for years at the Van Nuys Airport, because it's an important link to LAX. But more importantly, I want to ask you about one of the things that Mr. Rosendahl's been very vibrant on, and I agree with him totally, is the total disconnect of LAX with the transportation issues of the region. For us to build a green line and stop at a half a mile out of the airport is ludicrous. For us to be talking about a maglev system that we haven't even gotten around to really seriously talking to about with the airport, but there's huge issues that impact Ms. Hahn's district, Mr. Parks' district, and Mr. Rosendahl's district with transportation issues in the west side. And the airport has to be a part of that discussion. So I'd like to hear your viewpoints on what you believe the airport can or should be doing in the way of transportation planning for the whole region, because really, LAX is the bottleneck of that region, and needs to be a part of these discussions. So I'd like to hear if you have any viewpoints on those transportation issues, and LAX is a role in that.
Well, I certainly agree with your premise wholeheartedly. It's all a little new to me. I'm getting a physical tour of the airport on Monday of next week. I was out there yesterday and saw a lot of aerials, so I, but it makes all the sense in the world, the congestion there, and the difficulty in coming in and out of the airport. I know where I live, I would kind of rather go to Burbank than go to LAX, and so these issues have to be addressed. I hope Major R. will be helpful in expediting the extension of the green line and other activities. And I look forward to getting into those issues, and we'll address them. And I also would like to go to the airport. I'll do the Van Nuys trip.
Yeah, I think we'll arrange that for you.
I care because I grew up in the valley.
I know. And just for clarification, so everybody knows, your mother lives in my district, your mother's a constituent.
That's right.
So I have to say very nice things about you anyway, but I do, I do it because I really believe that. And finally, the mayor and I and Mr. Rosendahl, with the city of West Covina and the city of Ontario, where we have our other airport, have formed a JPA dealing with a maglev train system. We've talked to Ms. Hahn about taking it into the harbor and taking goods out of the harbor as well. And I'd like to have an opportunity, once you get settled, to sit down and brief you on that concept, and maybe if opportunity arises, take you to Atlanta, Georgia, where they have a test track, so you can actually see one of these facilities. We have that at the Pudong Airport in China. They're building one out of the Munich Airport right now. There are 200 mile-an-hour systems that can move people out of the airport to downtown LA in seven minutes for about $16. It's cheaper than a cab fare, and in seven minutes, it's a superb opportunity. So I'd like to have an opportunity after you get settled in, so we can sit down and talk about that, because I think it's the future of Los Angeles that we're dealing with now, so that future generations will not have the problems we currently have at LAX.
Well, and in addition, we need to increase our market share. We've lost market share since 9/11, and there's no reason this city shouldn't have the economic benefits that the airport can bring on all the levels that Councilmember Hahn is speaking to, so.
Great. Thank you very much.
We'll look you up.
Ms. Essel, I can't wait to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grul is next.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Chris. I too, when I learned of the mayor's appointment, thought this is one of his best appointments ever to the Airport Commission, because not only have you served in the Central City Association, but the Community Redevelopment Agency, a number of nonprofits, and serving at Paramount, and really knowing how the city works. And so your insight is going to be incredibly useful as you go into the Airport Commission. The airport is the gateway to our city, and I was sitting with some people over the weekend who were comparing our airport to other airports in the country, and it was not pretty. And we know that there, you know, our new general manager is pushing very hard, and as Ms. Hahn mentioned, the economy and the changes there, but the importance of that modernization and an investment in our future, and also the regionalization that I know Bill Rosendahl would talk about if he was here, the importance of looking at the other pieces of the pie in this area, the pieces of the puzzle, to how we deal with transportation. And see, when you're third or fourth, everyone else has said what you're going to say, but as Mr. Smith was talking about, the importance of the connection with the transportation systems.
Right.
And that is critically important, the green line that will go in, hopefully, to the airport, the ability to not have everyone drive into our airport there, and for people to choose going to LAX rather than going to Burbank for their options, because they want, it's the ease of getting in there, not having the traffic, but also ensuring that we utilize Ontario and look at transportation systems that are critically important here in the city. Shh. You don't mind me, Greg, sorry. And so I think, and looking at you, as we look at tourism as one of our most important parts of the city, and we look at our revenue generating, the airport is an important part of that. And so I hope that as you look at balancing needs of the airport as an economic engine and the community that is interested as well, I know that is part of what your history here in Los Angeles has been, is trying to build consensus around that. So we hope, and as mentioned, in Van Nuys Airport, although it is not in my district, my district is impacted, as is by Burbank Airport. I always say that it shouldn't be the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport, because really, none of them are impacted by it. They all come through our districts, coming in as well as going out. And so that relationship is also critically important as to decisions that are made at Burbank Airport and how they impact those of us in the rest of the city. So I welcome your appointment. Those are some of the issues that I am interested in as well, and really glad that you're going to serve on the Airport Commission. I wasn't knowledgeable about the fact that in 2005, that really, we hadn't had any change since then originally, so this is a good opportunity for us to reengage as well on the issue of the airport. Thank you, Mr. President, and I wholeheartedly support your nomination.
Thank you. I'm very excited.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
You miss Paramount?
It's only been a month.
All right. Well, you don't miss it that much. The staff at LAX, I just want to acknowledge Mike Molina, I think he's floating around somewhere.
Yes, he is.
And Lisa Marie, there he is. A great staff. The LAX police, or dietary protection detail, just wonderful folks. They do a great job. You have traveled, I'm sure, internationally, and you go to other airports, and you see the comfort, the convenience, and then you're flying out of LAX, and you throw your hands up and say, can anything change, anything be better? Well, now you're going to be in a position to make those changes. So it's like you're in a football stadium watching the game, and now you're going to be the quarterback, because you'll be able to make changes there that we all wish would happen. You travel in, you see the Southwest Terminal, people lined up outside, trying to get to the screening process. Everything is just so antiquated there, and hopefully, with your position, working with the other commissioners, we can bring that up to a modern standard. I know there's been a lot of controversy about the airport, but clearly, if we have a choice, we'll go to Burbank, we'll go to another airport, we should want to go to LAX, a state-of-the-art airport, and hopefully, we can make that. So I just want to wish you success in that endeavor, but every time you go there, just think that you're representing 4 million people that have to, one time or another, go to LAX and be frustrated and wait in line and go through the baggage check, et cetera, on the screening, and you're now in a position to make the difference, to make the change. So I wish you well. You'll probably get an ID. You'll be able to go to the front of the line when you go through screening.
Talking about parking, too.
Parking, yeah, but think of the rest of us at the back of the line waiting to get through the process, but.
I think I've experienced all the horrors that LAX has.
There you go.
Awkward in the past, so yes, I'm very excited about doing my part to make it a better place.
Perfect. You're a great person to make that change.
Thank you so much.
So I wish you well in that endeavor, and the success of bringing LAX to a modern airport that we really need for this area. So congratulations to you, Chris.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, Ms. Essel. We had the chance to meet yesterday, so I won't grill you with 10 pages of questions, not only because we had a chance to talk, but I wanted to stand as somebody who has worked with you, and essentially been your councilmember for a long time, at least professionally. And you were the absolute best thing at Paramount in the last eight years for the work that I've done with Paramount, and your shoes will be impossible to fill, and I want to thank you for that great work, whether it was with the community, whether it was with the Chamber of Commerce, whether it was looking at making sure that Paramount was tied into the area around it. You just did an extraordinary job, and I'm so excited we get to continue to work together here. So I wanted to stand up and say that. I wanted to reiterate what some of my colleagues said, which we shared as well, and Ms. Hahn has been such a great leader with Mr. Rosendahl on, which is that we have a pretty crappy airport in a lot of ways, and we're bringing it into the 20th century first, and hopefully in the 21st century shortly thereafter, whether it's been the bathrooms, whether it's been the way people are greeted, and what they visually see, whether it's been the lack of public transit. We have been an airport that is at least 50 years behind where we should be. And we can do that in a way that's sensitive to the neighborhoods around, but that really modernizes this airport and makes it worthy of a great city, which it's not right now. And I think your business experience will be unique. You have construction management experience, I know. You have an ability to do a lot of the public liaison work between government and communities, and I hope that that will continue with Mr. Rosendahl's direction and Ms. Hahn's leadership with the surrounding communities, so that we don't have so much to fear, but something to embrace and which serves everybody. And one last thing, which I know has been very important around here as well, is to make this one of the greenest airports anywhere. Los Angeles is already such a green city. We do such a bad job of telling that story. We also can go further in the construction, which I know we've all talked about, making a very high green lead level, but also looking at making sure that we brand ourselves so when a visitor comes here, they understand that sunlight and that ocean is part of our whole commitment to the ecology that is here. So those things together, I think, will make an extraordinary airport. We couldn't be in better hands. I really don't have any questions for you, because I know your business acumen, I know how much you love this city and care about its people, and we're going to be looking forward to your leadership on the Airport Commission, and it's just an extraordinary nomination for the mayor, so congratulations.
Thanks for pointing out the green issues. That's been a passion of mine for many years, too.
Absolutely.
I did meet with Councilmember Rosendahl on case any of you were wondering.
Yes.
We did have quite a lengthy meeting yesterday, so I know.
Let the record reflect that. He's at a funeral right now, I know, but he very much was very enthusiastic about your nomination as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Hahn, you're next.
Thank you. Well, this has been a good discussion. It's, we haven't grilled you as much, asking your opinion on things, but I think you've heard from a variety of councilmembers that clearly this is a focus for the city of Los Angeles, and we have issues with Ontario and Van Nuys, but we really want to move forward, particularly at LAX, modernizing. If councilmembers.
Hold my, hold my time, please.
Yeah, I know. I'm not going to ask security to escort the gentleman out of the chambers, please. Please help the, please help the gentleman out of the chambers, please.
Nothing I said.
Yeah, don't take it personally. That was on my time, too. Okay. Your time has begun again, Ms. Hahn. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, don't take it personally. But I was going to say, if Councilmember Rosendahl were here, and he's been echoed a couple times in the chambers, he certainly would, he certainly would talk to you about regionalization, and we talked a little bit about that in committee, and I was just going to certainly invite you particularly to get involved in what SCAG is doing, and I really want to work on the relationship between SCAG and LAX, and LALA, really, all of our airports, because I'm a vice chair of the Aviation Committee, and we're looking at not just LA-owned airports, but let's look regionally at all the airports, all the facilities, because we always believe that the benefits and the burdens ought to be shared regionally. And the other thing I think Councilmember Rosendahl would talk about is safety, safety and security. We want this to be the safest airport in terms of less runway incursions, but we also want this to be secure, and we want to continue our lobbying effort in Washington DC with this new administration to make sure that we get our fair share of Homeland Security dollars, and to realize that we need enough screeners, enough TSA screeners, to make the process, you know, more available and quicker for passengers. So again, congratulations. One more thing, I still would really like to look on the connection between LAX particularly and the Port of Los Angeles, particularly in terms of the cruise ship industry. One of the things in Florida, when I visited the Disney Cruise Ship, they have an arrangement with the airport, that people who go on cruises can check their baggage straight from the ship to the airport, they never have to handle their baggage again, and that's an incentive. That's something that would get people to use our cruise ships in San Pedro and fly into LA International Airport. Let's make it convenient. We know you can check in from the convention center, you can actually get your boarding pass when you attend a convention. Let's work at making that same kind of connection with people who are on the cruise ship, so that when they dock in San Pedro, they never have to handle their baggage again, they can get their boarding pass and make the connection at LAX. So there's a lot of issues that are very exciting. You're not going to be able to focus on all of them, but we really applaud you for your willingness to step up and serve on this commission, and think that there are great times ahead for all of our airports. There's challenges, but we really believe that you're perfect to sit on this commission.
Thank you all so much.
So hopefully, we'll get a unanimous support for your appointment today. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. There are no further speakers in the queue, and Ms. Essel, if you'd like to make some concluding remarks, otherwise I'll open the roll.
You open the roll.
All right. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Madam President, do you wish to take a public comment?
We'll do general public comment now. As is our custom, we take the commissioners just before the general public comment. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We'll start, I know Mr. Anderson left the premises, and we have Clyde Williams as our first speaker, and if we could make sure we afford the public speakers a little space up there so we can hear you. Hold on one second, Mr. Williams. We want to make sure we hear what you have to say. And with that, you have two minutes. Go ahead. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Clyde Williams, resident of 4115 Barrett Road in El Sereno, also a member of Friends of Southwest Museum Coalition. We are quite concerned regarding lease agreements, and the city of Los Angeles has a lease agreement with the Autry National Center. This lease agreement, for 20 years, has been in default. The lease agreement has very specific requirements, and none of them have been complied with, as evidenced in the files for the Recreation and Parks Department. No as-bilts, no modification plans, no annual reports, no income tax reports, no accounting, and especially no change of accounting from previous years to the current year. They changed it again. Now, read the original lease agreement. It was very good, very strong. However, Recreation and Parks Department has failed for 20 years to enforce it, not even the $1 a year fee for 11 acres of land. We're concerned also that MOKA, this afternoon, will be a subject of consideration. MOKA has an arrangement. We haven't seen the lease agreement. We don't know how it was enforced. We know that there's a problem of the site and for the collection of the site. So we are concerned that the lease agreement that will be presented soon will not have the conditions to preserve the Southwest Museum and its collection, as stated in the merger agreement between the Autry National Center and the Southwest Society. So please watch the enforcement of the rules and regulations that you sign off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you for your activism on this issue. Chuck Tenen is our next speaker. After that is Malathi Ramji.
Good morning, Council President Garcetti and Councilmembers. Our economy in this city, trade, commerce, affordable housing, transportation, city services, city programs, violence, budget cuts, last year, it was the same old thing. We talk about it. What's it going to be this year? More of the same? Less trade, commerce, less affordable housing, more budget cuts, less services, programs and jobs, more violence, no programs for the kids? All the city council members have three weeks vacation to think about it. Everybody's waiting for Obama to take office, waiting for his economic stimulus package, waiting for his cure for all of our problems. He didn't cause it, and he said it's not a quick fix. If you think this city will get their fair share of the package, wake up. Lots of luck. The real answer is for us to find our own ways to get funding to maintain this city, its healthy existence, its people and its future. What we don't need is another frightening, depressing 2008, a wake-up lesson of things to come and more economic failure that will affect us all. 2009 is about change, but it won't come to you or happen by itself. We all need to make it happen or else. We need to reach out to lead the way in the right direction. That's how it is 2009. You can accept it the way it is, you can call on Dr. King, happy dreams, or you can make change happen for the future of our city and its people. It starts with you and me, and that's the way it is. You can find it in the library, in our Constitution, and in our history. You can be a machine and not do a thing, or you can help bring about change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Malathi Ramji is our next speaker, and then Marlene Goodman.
Good morning. I'm here to commemorate the 20th anniversary of Billy's incarceration at the Los Angeles Zoo, and I would like to make a comment. At the last Zoo Commission, one commissioner expressed his concern that Latino children would feel deprived if there were no elephants at the zoo. I find that a patronizing and very offensive statement. I come from India. My daughter-in-law is Hispanic. That makes my grandchildren part Indian, part Hispanic, and I'm very proud of that fact. I have never considered them to be either advantaged or disadvantaged because of either side of their heritage. Our whole extended family, including my grandchildren, completely and wholeheartedly support releasing Billy to the sanctuary. I am glad that my grandchildren are being raised to have empathy and compassion for all creatures and to realize that if you truly love someone or something, you think of their needs and their well-being. It is time to put Billy's needs first and to release him to the sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Marlene Goodman, and then after that is Tim Cushman.
Yeah, I just wanted to state, I'm reading this for Catherine Doyle, who had to leave due to another commitment.
Okay.
And today is the 20th anniversary of Billy's confinement at the L.A. Zoo, where 15 elephants who have suffered and died prematurely. We urge in the City Council to permanently halt construction of the L.A. Zoo's $42 million exhibit and send Billy to a sanctuary before he becomes another number in the zoo's elephant death toll. Of the 15 elephants who died at the zoo, more than half of them did not live to age 20. The natural lifespan for an elephant is 60 to 70 years. It has been 20 years since Billy was taken from his family as a calf in Malaysia and forced into captivity at the L.A. Zoo. Despite all the veterinary care and absence of poaching, elephants in zoos live only half as long as those in the wild populations. Zoos can no longer claim that they are conserving elephants when they are actually killing these endangered animals decades before their natural time. There is absolutely no evidence to suggest that a 3.5 exhibit subdivided into four smaller yards will improve elephant health or longevity. What we do know is that the zoo will continue the same practices that science now tells us is cutting short the lives of elephants in zoos. Life in zoos is devastating for elephants, and spending $42 million on an exhibit that is still too small will not change Billy's fate or that of other elephants at the zoo. I urge you to listen to the real experts, such as Dr. Joyce Poole, one of the world's foremost elephant experts, who previously addressed the council, and Dame Daphne Sheldrake, who spent more than 50 years caring and conserving for elephants in Kenya. They and other experts have come out against the exhibit. Please heed the recent study established in the prestigious, peer-reviewed Journal of Science that tell us that life in zoos is killing elephants
Thank you very much, ma'am.
prematurely. Do the right
I'm sorry, we have to try to keep it as consistent as possible, but if you'd like to give the statement to the Sergeant-at-Arms, we'd be happy to take a look at it. Thank you. Okay. Tim Cushman is our next speaker, and then Karen Bonadilla.
Good morning. Good morning, Honorable President and Councilmembers. My name is Tim Cushing. I'm a professional photographer, and that does include a lot of wildlife as well. I had the unique opportunity to photograph elephants at a sanctuary in Thailand and throughout, throughout Asia, including India. One of the points that's often made here about Billy and about what's happening with the pachyderm forest is conservation. I'd just like to say the conservation, as I've witnessed it, includes the conservation of not just the body of the animal, but also the spirit. I think that it is agreed that most animals, and I know that as a photographer, I certainly like to photograph wildlife in the wild. Secondary to that would be at a sanctuary, probably lastly, at a zoo, the only way to really see the beauty and majesty of any animal, including human beings, when they're photographed, is also in their natural habitat. I'd just like to say that there's a lot of talk of vision, and vision for the L.A. Council, and for the city of L.A. and its people. There is a possibility to make visionary decisions, and I'd like to just take an example of Yellowstone National Park, where Ulysses S. Grant put his signature to a piece of paper to give a very important piece of land to the American people for many generations. So I'd just like to say, really, to keep it short, is that I implore the council from the bottom of my heart, and from anyone else's heart as well, that, you know, Billy can live not just as an exhibit, but be released to a sanctuary where he can actually live as an elephant. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cushman. Karen Bonadilla is our next speaker, and then Catherine Doyle. Ms. Bonadilla? Karen? Nope. Okay. Catherine Doyle? Oh, you read her statement. Thank you. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker, and after that, we'll be following Mr. Sachs's Mary Catalano.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council. Happy New Year to you.
You, too.
I really wanted to focus on one thing today, and although it's already occurred, the loss of public access TV in L.A. I said once before that when Metro raised affairs, it was a black day for L.A., but the loss of public access television has got to be the blackest day in L.A. And then in the Times, when you read the stories regarding how the state legislation, legislature blindsided the city of L.A. by putting this law into effect to help Verizon enter into cable television. How is having Time Warner eliminate public access helping Verizon level the playing field? It's helping them because if there was no elimination for Time Warner, then Verizon would have to develop its own broadcasting system, which it doesn't have. It's such a disgraceful maneuver by the city, by the state legislation, and even more disgraceful by the city of L.A. not to observe what's going on, to allow it to happen. All you need to do is substitute the word "opportunity" for "access" and say to yourself, "Public access is no longer, public access TV is no longer available for public use." Just put "opportunity" in there. Say, "Public opportunity for access to television is no longer available on cable TV." That's a real help to the public. It's a real savings for the public. Congratulations, City Council, on leading the charge from behind again, as your options always are and what you are always best at doing. All the people here appreciate your action.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. I think Mr. Smith wanted to correct something for the record.
Just for the, for the record, ladies and gentlemen, the city of L.A. opposed the bill. We sent our lobbyists to Sacramento to fight the bill. We knew all along the bill is going to destroy public access. The city is on record of opposing it and fighting it.
Thank you for that, that important information. And that is true. Mary Catalano is our next speaker, and then Dwight Carey. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I wanted to thank you for, last year, you voted in a wonderful and humane ordinance for spay neuter in Los Angeles. I want to thank you personally for that. I've worked very hard to try and rescue animals from our pounds who are slaughtered on a regular basis, and I appreciate that very much. And I'm asking you today to step up again and show your compassion by allowing Billy the elephant to go off to a sanctuary. You need to show your children that compassion and guardianship of these animals is important. When children find out that 14 animals have been killed under our guardianship, how sad is that? Please teach them and offer them the option of having the love and kindness toward other creatures. We have lost 14 elephants. We have a 20-year sentence on an innocent being here in Los Angeles. It's a very, very sad thing. You did step up. You made an ordinance for spay neuter. You were going to save lives by that act of action, and I appreciate it. Please help teach others around the country what kindness is and what compassion is toward these beings that we are so lucky and fortunate to have in our, around us, have access to. We have no right to put them to death prematurely. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dwight Carey, and after that is Barbara Diaz.
Good morning. I would just like to make a brief point. I think that we should not be encouraging captivity for elements, given, for elephants, given the nature of that captivity and what it does for their lifespan and their health. We should be encouraging sanctuaries, because that is the best place where elephants can survive in a safe environment that encourages their health. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbara Diaz is our next speaker, and after that will be Michael Carrion.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
You, too.
I like what this gentleman said a while ago about starting 2009 on a positive note for the people of Los Angeles and for the animals of Los Angeles. I come to speak for Billy because he can't speak for himself, so I raise my trunk for Billy. And I think that it would be such a wonderful precedent for us as a great city. I'm a native-born Los Angelen. It would be so wonderful if we would send him to Paws, which is up, up north, and that way, he'd be able to mingle among his own species. I was at the L.A. Commission meeting, L.A. Zoo Commission meeting last December, and I, I walked around the L.A. Zoo. It's been like almost 30 years since I was last there. And I remember as a little girl, when the, when we were all watching the primates, they threw feces at the public. And even as a little child, I understood, and I felt some compassion for them. And I feel compassion for Billy, as I'm sure many of you do, and I really, really plead for you to put that compassion before dollars and send him where he can, like I said, mingle among his own. And like I was saying, I was at L.A. Zoo, and I walked around, and I noticed all the beautiful plants and foliage that was there, and all this wonderful space that I, as a pedestrian, can use. And I thought, the animals should be able to use this. They should be able to brush up against these trees and the foliage, not me, you know. I mean, that's great if I can do it, but I saw what Billy was, the space he was in, and it was, the ground was wet from the rain, and they were, it was just not big enough for him. He needs more space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Michael Carrion. After that will be David Hernandez. Good morning.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I'm here again on the lack of park enforcement, and I'm not going to go away until the City Council does something about it. We have more ordinances, anti-grid lock, we have tollway zones, we have red flags, we have all these things that are stated to improve our quality of life. It is just a revenue. That's all it is, revenue, revenue, revenue. Okay? When the city vehicles are parked there, they don't get sighted. Yes, on occasions, they do get ticketed. You have right across the street, Parker Center, where there's 50 police cars parked out there in the tollway zone in the red, and because they're detectives, the excuse is, "We may need our vehicle in an emergency." Well, detectives don't respond to emergencies, only disasters. Okay? They respond to things after they're done. The point is that you are citing the taxpayers, you are citing the, the normal people, the regular people, your own constituents have to flip the bill for your mismanagement of money. The world's short, everybody's short, but I'm getting sick and tired of your parking enforcement officers citing one person for parked illegally, their meter expired, when one of your city vehicles is parked in the red or somewhere else, breaking the law in front of a hydrant, on the corners, and there's no enforcement there. You need to just walk right outside this building and see it. It is done on a daily basis. It says media parking only. Your vehicle's parked to come in here and speak. They are not, this is not an emergency. I hear excuses that there's only so much parking enforcement allowed. Then they got to pay for parking, and the city has to reimburse them. They should be parking in parking lots or wherever they should be parking, not illegally parking.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Our last speaker is David Hernandez.
Good morning, Council. Happy New Year. When I was a public access producer, I was starting to hear about the issue of the elephant exhibit at the zoo, and I had Catherine Doyle, the president of the Los Angeles Alliance for Elephants, on the show to learn more and to be able to offer the residents of Los Angeles more information. And as a result of that, and examining the financial report and the cost, I became involved in opposing that exhibit back in 2006, and it was merely from a financial aspect. However, following those initial discussions with you, the elephant, one of the elephants at the zoo, who in that report was giving a glowing health report, died. And so it not only became a fiscal issue, but it also became a humanitarian issue. There are three issues on the table, all of which are separate. The elephant exhibit is not contingent on Billy remaining at the zoo. A possible sanctuary in CD7 is not contingent upon Billy remaining at the zoo. These are three separate issues. We've begun to hear talk about privatization at the zoo. Billy is not an asset to be maintained in order to enrich another organization coming in to privatize the zoo. You can do the right thing today. The record is clear, not only with GIDEA, if that was just the only one, but it wasn't. You look, the evidence is clear, you have an opportunity. The choices are sanctuary or cemetery. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. That will close our general public comment right now. You want to step forward, ma'am? Well, just give us your name, and we'll enter that into the record as well. Good morning.
Good morning. I do have one question.
Could you just give us your name real quick for the record?
Inger Eplin.
Okay, thank you.
I have one last question regarding Billy. I'm here on behalf of him, he can't speak for himself. Have you in person been up and addressed and visited Billy and seen the conditions?
Under the Brown Act, we can only listen right now because it was an agendized. We can only listen, we can tell you things privately, but we can't, we can't publicly respond to questions.
For those of you that haven't been up and seen him, I urge you to go up and see the conditions. It's very bad. And I also want a very famous quote, "The animals of the world exist for their reasons." They were not made for humans any more than black people were made for whites and women for men. That was by Alice Walker. So I'm asking you, please, to show some humanity, free Billy, teach our children morals and ethical behavior. I tell you, children themselves react to this, that wonder why these big, beautiful animals are staying there unhappy by themselves, and here the adults come in to teach them bad morals and no ethical values here. I think it's very disturbing to teach our children this, since this is focused so much on the children. So I'm asking you, please, you can make a change. I have a feeling you're a good person, and you have, can feel empathy, to free Billy, send him to sanctuary, and don't waste any tax money, 42 millions to, to waste on another sanctuary, which is not even going to be big enough at all. He's staying there, solitary, alone, lonely, and this is such a hurt animal. Please send him to sanctuary so he can live with his own species. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will close our general public comment. If we can take up the ordinances 17 through 20 that were held on the desk for 12 members, we now have 12 members here. Please open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved, and we have one card, two cards, excuse me, on item 16, which is also an ordinance. If we can take that up next. Clyde Williams will be our first speaker, and then Michael Carrion.
For item 16, also for item 9, we're quite concerned regarding...
We'll hold your time. Number 9 had a hearing in committee, so somebody will have to reopen it, or else we'll put your name on the record.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you. I understand. Fire Department. Where is the Fire Department in this particular item? Brush and safety, Building and Safety deals with the vacant lots, the, uh, City, the Street Services deal with this particular issue, it's setting the date. But how about the contents? I myself received a notice. I said, "My house is landscaped, my lots are landscaped. Get your accuracy of the application of these," because there's thousands of lots issued notices. We eventually sorted it out. I would suggest that you have an earlier date rather than March, how about February, next month? Because this year may be a very large fire danger year. There's also consistency of application. If it's under Building and Safety, you can have the whole place filled with weeds, especially now with foreclosures in process, and it's not cleared by Building and Safety. It's not cleared by Streets. It's not under the Fire Department. Where does it come from? Where does it go? We're also concerned about in El Serrano, the Ascot Park. The areas adjacent to Ascot Park appear to be out of bounds for everybody. The Fire Department doesn't control the perimeter of Ascot Park and thereby can subject Ascot Park to a future fire. We're quite concerned about that in El Serrano. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Carrion. Mr. Carrion, you're our next speaker.
My name is Michael Carrion, and we're talking about weed abatement. Again, I, I'm at the point where I'm frustrated with the way the City Council does business. We put all these weed abatements and everything on normal folks, but you guys can't get your own private properties clean. The Water and Power said the fire that happened was the fault of City or Water and Power property. A wire fell, your weeds were too high, caused the fire. Maybe in your district. In, in District 14, we have a lot of city property that their weeds are six and eight feet tall, and I am starting to work with my City Councilmen in regards to these things. Now, the first thing that's being cut is the tree trimming, first thing the mayor cut in this budget crunch. Although we have trees that are going down to the ground, four feet, three feet from the floor. I told you guys back then, when the mayor asked us to plant a million trees, who is going to take care of these million trees? Nobody. The people that you leave in charge back then are going to have the same problem you have now. The people who planted the ficus trees didn't foresee them breaking the sidewalks, growing as huge as they are, and causing the nuisance they do. Yet, you're going to put people's property in reaping everything and force them to clean their yards when this city cannot clean their own yards. That's all I'm asking for. If you're going to make an ordinance, and you're going to do it, clean your house before you tell somebody else to clean theirs. Keep your property up and maintain it before you force somebody else to clean theirs. Instead, you go in heavy-handed and threaten people by taking their property and putting it in escrow and not letting them collect rents because it's not up to your specifications, but your property isn't either.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. That will close our public comment on this item. Any council members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That ordinance is approved as well. We have two specials. We're still waiting, some items on number 9, we're still waiting on. So if we can take up the first special one on the findings, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that a reward be offered relating to the November 8, 2008 hit-and-run incident that resulted in the death of Royce Mills while crossing 47th Street in his motorized wheelchair. Immediate action is required to apprehend the suspect for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, on the findings, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is before us. Ms. Perry on the substance.
Thank you. Just the time, so much time elapsed that we needed to do it like this, and so I ask for your aye vote or unanimous vote.
Thank you. Let's prepare the roll on special one and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
As approved, we'll send that forth with without objection. Special two on the findings, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that a reward be offered relating to the December 27 murder of Denise Gonzalez outside 2240 South Wall Street. Immediate action is required to apprehend the suspect for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay. On the findings, if nobody wishes to be heard, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is before us now on the substance. Any members? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved as well, and we will send that forth with, without objection. Are council members, Alakon and Parks, ready for number 9? Otherwise, all we have is closed session. But are you ready for number 9?
I, I think we are, but...
Okay. All right, recognize Mr. Alakon on item number 9.
Members, disregarding Mr. Parks' motion to allow the Housing Department to establish a fund to take care of disaster victims with regard to their emergent housing needs, there was one line that was a little unclear to me. It gave me the impression that we were allowing the owner to provide a discount rate for a year, and then we were eliminating that unit from RSO. So I, I'm trying to come up with cleanup language that is satisfactory to Council Member Parks. And what I've come up with is, oh, he read it, so basically it says that instead of saying that after a year, do you have that line? That the owner would, oh, here's, here's, the sentence I have a concern with is, in the intent language, it says, "At the conclusion of the one-year period, the landlord would be allowed to raise rent to market rates, and such units would not be subject to RSO requirements such as relocation costs." That, that doesn't have a closure to it, it doesn't have an end date to it, and it sounds like the landlord would be able to avoid RSO permanently. So I wanted to do cleanup language. The intent is to allow the owner to provide a discount rate but not be subject to relocation costs when the victim, at the end of a year, is still there or wants to go back. In the case of the Sayre Fire, for example, if they want to go back to their mobile home, they shouldn't be entitled to $17,000 from the owner, that, or whatever their, their reallocation is. So the language I've come up with in, in, in place of that, it's a friendly amending motion that would say, "At the conclusion of the one-year period, the unit would re, will reset to the current market rate with reestablished RSO requirements, except for relocation requirements for those victims provided assistance." And I think that, that will go a long way. Now, this is just a report. If that doesn't accomplish the, the goal, we can certainly hammer out the details in committee and, and before the ordinance is written. But I think if, if Mr. Parks is okay with that, I offer that as a friendly amendment. Okay?
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, I, I would support that language, and I think what we're trying to get to is that many of us were here when we had Katrina. We came up with this ordinance that gave the ability of matching many of the people that were from Katrina with vacant apartments. We also had a sunset clause on that ordinance, which we had every intent to come back and have a routine emergency ordinance. What's prompted this is we've had foreclosures and now major fires that have prompted us to have this ordinance on the books, and we want to make sure, in addition to Mr. Alakon's language cleans up, we want to make sure it also includes in the direction to the Housing Department that this is something that the Council has to affirmatively invoke. It's just not something that happens arbitrarily. So there's got to be a declaration of some housing concern or emergency for us to use this emergency ordinance.
Thank you. With that amendment, if that's accepted as friendly, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. That leaves us just the closed session items. Colleagues, are there any closed session items that we would like to hear in closed session? Or conversely, any that folks would like to move now in open session? On which one? Okay, on 30, we will hold 30 for closed session. And if there's no other questions on 31 through 34, let's go ahead and go through those settlements then.
Mr. President, the first one is actually just to adopt the City Attorney recommendation.
Okay, we will move that recommendation. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that recommendation is approved. Next item.
Next one is item number 32, and that's in the case of Fay Enterprises Incorporated versus City of L.A. Settlement amount is $120,536.69.
Okay, we'll move that. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next one.
Next one is item number 33, and that's a workers' comp case, Stock versus City of L.A. Settlement amount is $212,017.50 plus a life pension thereafter, $247.38 per week.
Okay, we'll move that recommendation. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Last one is item number 34, and that settlement in the case of McKay versus City of L.A. That's also a workers' comp case. Disability amount is $137,425 plus a life pension thereafter payable at $112.10 per week.
Okay, please open the roll on that recommendation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved as well. We thank City Attorney and staff members for being here on those items, and in accordance with California state law, we will now go into closed session for discussions of legal matters on item number 30. If we could please clear the room, we'll come back into open session when we're done. Thank you.[1500.53]